Good evening. The hour being after 7:30, it's my pleasure to call the September 26th, 2019 School Committee Meeting to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sadly, our second order of business this evening is a heartfelt one. We will have a moment of silence from Mrs. Marilyn Boulay, who was a longtime teacher in the Walpole Public School System. Mrs. Boulay taught at the Plimpton School for many years, first as an elementary school teacher, then as an experimental open classroom. She was the first teacher to bring students to Camp Calumet. She did so in November, so even some good ideas can be augmented a little. And then she taught it for many years at the Byrd Middle School. Through social media and things that have come and filled up to us on the school committee, we've been able to find out just how much of a beloved educator she was and a wonderful citizen of Walpole. And she'll be greatly missed as a member of our community who did so much for many generations of the students. Moving on, our next order of business is recognition. We have the Walpole High School Awards Special Olympics National Banner Unified Champion School. Mr. Farrell. We have Charlie Farrell and Carrie Dolan from the high school.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So last year, we, this is Carrie Dolan, she's the advisor for Best Buddies. And I think we have a member of Best Buddies here today. Last year, because of all the programs that we do at the school for special education students and our career net students, we accepted a banner called the Choose to Include School because of some of the activities that our students do both through Best Buddies. And we have a brewing independence that every morning, no, two mornings a week, the students brew coffee and they deliver it to all the teachers in the morning. And there's something special about getting the coffee handed to you with a guy with a big face, smiling face and happy face. And then because of our administration and our athletic director, Steve Imbush and Ron Dove, we have been very successful in hosting two sectional meets at Walpole. And Patty Darty, who's the director, said Walpole couldn't be better, more open, and we ran two great meets because of everybody's help, a lot of people involved in that. But I think we kind of, we're a standout now. So sectional meet every year, which is very nice and we love to do it. So when Patty said after the second one, she said, why don't you guys apply for a national banner championship school? And I said, I didn't really, didn't know what that was. So she said, you have to meet a bunch of criteria. You have to host two sports, which we do. We host obviously Unified Track and we also host the Unified Bocce Meet every year, which is very successful. And then we have all of our Best Buddies, the programs that they run. Want to say a couple of words about that?
So in Best Buddies, we have a meet, one meeting a month, and then we do a special activity every month. Our biggest event is our Best Buddies Dinner Dance, which is held in March. Just last weekend, we participated in the Best Buddies of Massachusetts and Rhode Island Friendship Walk in Pawtucket, and we raised over $1,200 for Best Buddies International. So our group does a lot of fundraising and just a lot of group activities together, and we have a great group of students.
We've also done programs. We did Rock the Socks, which is an Autism Awareness Week. Everyone wore funky socks to school.
That was dancing.
Dancing, sorry. And then the Film Festival also put out a movie about, we called United Friends, and that was a big hit. So we also did Spread the Word, which is a great program for us to have. And then, so she said, you need to put all this together because I think you qualify. So we finally did. We've gone on for a long time. The other thing is one of them, we have to kind of promise sustainability, that we are going to continue to do this, and we do. So this, I applied, we all applied for it last year, and this includes a lot of people. It includes, like I said, Mr. Imbush, Mr. Dove, all of the coaches. We have an adaptive PE program that's run by Gary, and he does a great job. And then I have five different coaches. Tommy Hart is involved. Also, he comes to all of our meets with Rebel, of course. And so it takes a lot of people to create this and sustain this, but it's been very, very successful. So we got the news, I think it was September, I sent you an email in September, that we won National Special Olympics Banner Program as Unified Champion School. And they're going to have some presentation. They're going to come with a big flag and do a major presentation, so we'll send it out to everyone they do show up. So we were very proud of that. And like I said, it's been going on a long time. We just put it all together because...
It was truly a team effort. It was myself and Kelly Robinson, the Best Buddies advisors, Charlie, the Unified Track coach, Carrie McMenamin, the Student Council rep, and they helped host the Bocce tournament. So it was truly a team effort.
Thank you.
Questions on the committee? Mrs. Gallion.
I would just ask Brendan, do you have anything you want to add as a member of Best Buddies? Seems like a meaningful thing for a student.
Yeah, I mean, I enjoy the program a lot, and I think it brings a lot of joy to everyone involved, both the buddies and the students who are involved. And the Friendship Walk last weekend showed that, just everyone coming together for a good cause on a fun day, and I like that a lot.
Brendan also represented us at the Leadership Conference in Indiana this past summer. So he's one of our shining stars, truly.
Excellent.
That's great.
So when I find out, we will have a banner ceremony, obviously in the gym. I don't know, we've got to figure out how to get everybody involved.
That's wonderful. Mrs. Teniezio.
Many years ago, I worked for the Center for Social Development and Education at UMass Boston, which was the research arm for Special Olympics. And the center's research found that the biggest barrier to inclusion is attitudes, the attitudes of others. And the work that you're doing is really helping to influence the attitudes of all of the students at the high school and, I think, the community. So I think it's wonderful, and thank you for doing what you're doing.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for your dedication and commitment. I know you've been doing it for a while, and I really appreciate it.
And I think the Walpole High School community, and Mr. Hart can speak to this too, there isn't, I don't think, I can't remember when it was ever a complaint by a student of special needs, because of someone else, some other student did. So it's pretty cool.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your leadership, yeah.
Moving on, the Docent Art Program. Will you take it up?
Sure. Jill Texera and Jana Mora. I know Jana couldn't be here tonight. They really are two people that have been instrumental in the Docent Program of our, in our schools. Jill is present tonight to talk about the program. If you don't know, Docent's a volunteer-led program designed to bring art into the classroom and enhance the children's learning experiences, exposing them to different genres. And artists, I believe Docent's been involved in the program in Walpole since 1981, so it's been around for a long time and want to see it continue. So Walpole would like to thank all of our Docent volunteers as they work to make this program available to our students. So I'll turn it over to you, Jill.
Well, thank you. You clearly listen very actively to other presentations, so you've got half of my content here. I'll be brief, I promise.
No, please.
So I wanted to make sure firstly that everyone knows what Docent is. So a Docent's a tour guide, and you can go to a museum and ask for a Docent, and they will help lead you through the museum, explain a little of what you're looking at, ask you questions, make it more fun and interactive for you. So what we do in the public schools, in elementary and the middle schools, is we bring the museum to the students. We have slide presentations, we have posters, we bring the art to them, and we have games and projects that we do to reinforce that lesson and make it more tangible and hands-on. But we ask them questions and lead them through the art and teach them what art's about. So the Docents are the parent volunteers who are going into their child's classrooms, and they teach them about, as Dr. Goff said, different artists, art styles, types of art, time periods, and the kids love it. So especially excited to see their parents. When the parent comes in, then they're always, you know, really proud, like, can I push the slides forward? And, you know, they, they just, you're greeted when we get there with this, you know, do we have Docent today? Yes! You know, but honestly, we don't give homework and we don't do tests, so we understand, you know, and plus it is really fun. But we appreciate the school's support. The teachers are just great about working with the parents and flexibly scheduling the lesson to occur when various parents can go. We have easily 100 amazing parents in Walpole that have children in these classes, in these grades, that are going in and providing the lessons to them, and dozens more who are still involved afterwards in hosting meetings, training other Docents. They still participate, and we rely on them to cover gaps so we may have them. So it's really, it's a unique program to Walpole, started in 1981, as you've heard. We have 32 different lessons from cave art up to contemporary art. And really, we start with basic concepts for the kids, but we work up to more sophisticated concepts, and it's just amazing to watch them progress in their ability to analyze and understand art. They don't even know they're being taught as they're going through this, just the questions, the answers. And we can engage kids who don't, you know, do math well, don't, you know, learn English well, but they can see colors and they can talk about shapes, and they really enjoy being a participant in that forum. So it's been my great pleasure to work with all of these amazing people and keep, you know, Docent thriving in Walpole Public Schools. So thank you for giving me this opportunity to come here today and having me here.
Well, thank you so much. I remember as a student, I loved the Docent Program, to your point, for the break in the math.
Yeah.
Don't tell Nancy that, but I enjoyed the kind of, the breakup there. And so did you say, this is, this is a kind of unique to Walpole Program?
It is unique to Walpole.
That's, that's awesome.
It was an art teacher designed the program in 1981, and we've, Jana Mora and I have kind of gone through and we've really kind of revised and nudged the curriculum in different ways, but it's very much the same. The, all the elementary schools have the program. As I said, 100, we counted up about 100 volunteers with active students now, and many more who still teach others, and some that have gone through the program and are now Docents teaching others as well. So it's pretty exciting for us.
How would someone, let's say they were a parent or an alumnus, how would they go about maybe volunteering for future?
To get involved?
Yes.
So at least at the, they're in the Boydin website, it talks about classroom participation, and we, you know, reach out to Brendan Dearborn. I run the program at Boydin School. Jana runs the middle school and is the district coordinator for us. So happy to leave you with, I think you have our email addresses and, you know, we, as they say, we're in all of the elementary schools and both middle schools, so there'd be a place for sure. It starts at first grade for Boydin. I think some of the other schools start with second grade, but it covers all grades through frog, all classrooms, all grades. We all, we make sure to cover everyone.
That's great. Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I saw, you know, Jill at the Boydin PAC meeting and presenting, and she's just as energetic and passionate and positive as she's ever been.
I think you won a few recruits that night, so...
I did. We had four recruits.
That's amazing.
Good, good. And I really appreciate, you know, you and Jana and all the work that you've been doing, and we greatly appreciate what you do for our community and our children. So keep up the good work.
Great, well, you as well.
Mrs. Gallion, too.
Jill, I just have one other question while you're on TV. You teach your volunteers, as I understand it, like, in other words, that people don't have to come with a tremendous amount of expertise, is that correct?
That is absolutely true. They don't have to come with any background or knowledge about it at all. The important part of our program is that we teach them, we provide them with a clear guide for the questions they're prompting their students through and the answers that they're kind of looking for. But in art, there's no real one answer or wrong. You don't say, no, that's wrong. You know, you, we kind of make sure that the Docents know how to respond and engage the whole classroom to encourage, you know, students that don't lift their hand more than just say once, call them them. But, but you don't have to have any kind of background in it at all. We do give you all the materials for the projects and the crafts, we give you all of the art lesson material, and make sure to train in advance so it's a quality program, and the parents know what they're saying so they feel comfortable going in front of the classroom. So absolutely, no background is needed in art. We do have some artists, and they keep us on the straight and narrow, but, but yeah, we definitely encourage all kinds of folks to join in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from the committee? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Moving on, we have Walpole High School Student Report. I'll give his inaugural report. We have Brendan Mahoney from Walpole High School.
Hello, I'm Brendan Mahoney. I'm a junior at Walpole High. Walpole High is in full swing with sports clubs and Student Council. With the first part of fall sports season underway, the records for the teams are as follows. Football is 1-2, boys soccer is 3-5-1, girls soccer is 1-4, field hockey is 4-0-1, golf is 4-5, volleyball is 3-4, swimming is 2-4, girls cross country is 5-1, and boys cross country is 3-3. The Student Council has also been planning many different events that are upcoming in the fall. Student Council will be hosting Fall Sea Mask in October, coinciding with their annual Breast Cancer Awareness Walk. Student Council's also planning Pride Day, furthering the Pride initiative with the pep rally for the day before Thanksgiving, where students can choose activities they would like to participate in. And in more recent news, the freshman classes' Student Council representatives were elected last Friday. And clubs at Walpole High School have also been really busy lately. The PM Club is planning their first visit to Boston for mid-October, and the Feminism Club had their first meeting this Monday, in which they talked about Empowered Women and Women in Religious Settings. Students for Equality had their first meeting of the year last week, and they spoke about racial issues that come up in Walpole High School. The Mock Trial Club is holding night meetings to practice before they receive the real case in late October. And finally, as you heard before, Best Buddies attended the Friendship Walk in Rhode Island at McCoy Stadium to promote inclusion, which was a lot of fun, I would say myself. And that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Questions from Mr. Mahoney? Seeing none, well, thank you. Please feel free to stay and join us for the rest of the meeting, contribute where you see fit, and go on from there. We'll see you probably in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Thank you. New business, we have an out-of-state field trip request.
So Byrd Middle School and Johnson Middle School are requesting an out-of-state field trip to Quebec City from February 6th, 2020 through February 8th, 2020. So Valerie Lucas is here to present and answer any questions that you may have.
She won't take us with her.
She will. We have a limited amount of chaperones, but yeah, again, this year, I think it's over 25 years that we've been requesting this permission to go to Quebec City. The trip was started with Johnson Middle School French teacher, who's actually still at the Walpole High School. But it went off and on a couple of years, but we had like 25 years of history going over there. We go there in our eighth grade, so eighth grade students who have studied French for two years will go to Quebec City to try their French and order their food in French and interact with other native speakers that we find in Quebec City. It coincides with their curriculum as we are just finishing a food unit and how to ask in restaurants and all that. It's a wonderful trip for the eighth grade students. We do a few fundraisers for them, Yankee Candle, we still do that, thanks to Bridget. And then we have 30 students that are eligible at Byrd Middle School and 34 at Johnson Middle School. So this year, it looks like we are going to have two buses, which is a little bummer for the price, because having two buses bumps the price a lot. So this year, the estimated price, we don't know exactly until all the students are committing to the trip, but it will probably be between 650 and 700. We bring chaperones, we always bring our nurse, our nurse, both nurses at the middle schools coordinate with our students and our, we make sure that all medical problems are addressed. We take a nurse with us in the bus and to the trip, the nurse is there for all times. We have Caitlin Affan, which is, who is at Johnson Middle School, and myself. Then we have a new administrator, which I believe is Mr. Cashman, who's going this year. And then we'll have one other teacher from one of the schools going. So we usually, so it looks like if we have like 50 students, we'll get five chaperones. If we have 60, we'll get five chaperones. And I know that past years, we have come back in kind of like May to give you an update with the kids, so to tell you how they enjoyed that, and I know I haven't been very good at following that last year. But usually, the kids really have a good time, they, it's their favorite memory of eighth grade, and they take that love of wanting to communicate to the high school and beyond. So that's really, really nice. We, we see a different culture, we talk about the differences between not only languages but the cultures and the way we approach things. We go to a couple museums when we go there, and we talk how to just leave beforehand in the classroom. So it's all tied to the...
Questions from Ms. Lucas.
This trip sounds wonderful. When you said 30, about 30 students eligible at Byrd, does that mean that's the number of eighth graders that take French?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions or comments, Dr. Goff?
I've been on this trip multiple times, and I wish I could go again. They go from sunup to sundown. They, they just are go-go-go all day for the time that they're there, and it really is a wonderful trip.
A well-organized trip.
It is, it is. It's a great trip.
Further questions? May I have a motion to approve the French trip to Quebec City from February 6th, 2020 to February 8th, 2020? Motion by Ms. Garrett, second by Ms. Teniezio. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? 6-0-0? Congratulations, have a good time.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Moving on, we now have our new superintendent induction program.
Yes.
Dr. Goff.
Thank you. Attached, you'll find Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Mass Association of School Superintendent's Information Sheet that's related to the new Superintendent Induction Program. Present tonight is Dr. Matt King. He's my mentor in the program. Matt will discuss the aspects and the goals of this program and answer any questions you may have. Just a little bit of background, he was formerly the Superintendent of Wellesley Public Schools. He has led three Massachusetts school districts for 29 years. He was superintendent in the Wellesley Public Schools from 1996 to 2007, superintendent and principal of Lincoln Sudbury Regional High School, and then also superintendent and principal of Carlisle Public Schools. He's also published numerous articles and consulted with school administrators throughout the country on school leadership and strengthening school culture. Dr. King also taught graduate courses at Harvard School of Education and Welaw College, and therefore, I am one lucky person.
I've also been at about 700 school committee meetings in my entire career. That does not include town meetings, so I really have a great deal of respect for those of you who are elected and should serve, you know, it's really very important work. And I love being superintendent, it was a job that I felt very fortunate to have and enjoyed my 28 years as a superintendent. So it's also my privilege to be a coach in the new Superintendent Induction Program. The program's been around for about 10 years, and just about every new superintendent in Massachusetts is in the program. And the program, it takes place over three years, so I just want to explain to you how that works. So the first year, there is six hours a month of onsite coaching, and so I'll, I'll be meeting here for, I usually come twice a month. And during visits, we spend some time talking, and we also spend some time walking and meeting with people, and I attend meetings and visit with schools and really try to do everything that I can to support Bridget and her work here. When I became a superintendent many years ago, it was a different world. There wasn't cable TV, so school committees used to sit around a table, and we would have conversations looking at each other, not at cameras. It's a much more complex world that we live in, and the role of the superintendent is very complicated. So the, the major focus of the NSIP program is, it's sort of twofold. One is about providing support in developing relationships with various stakeholders in the school districts, and the other is, over a period of time, developing what we call a Strategy for District Improvement. You have a strategic plan here, which Bridget and I have talked about, and she will be spending this first year during an entry phase, where I know that many of you are familiar with this because you've spoken with her about that. So what she's, one of the ways that I describe this for her is that because she has worked here and has lived here and is very familiar, is as the new superintendent, it's a very different role. And she is trying on different lenses to see with what's going on in the school. I like to say it's making the familiar strange, and she will be going through that phase this year, and eventually will be writing a report that she'll be sharing with you and the community about what she learned during this entry phase. And over the second year, the coaching goes down from the six hours to four hours a month. And the third year, there is an onsite coaching, but there, the groups of superintendents get together, and we call it a consultancy, and we work with them periodically over the course of the year. In addition, there are content days. So this first year, there are, I believe there are eight days when we get together, and we have, there's a curriculum essentially, and we meet all of the, this year will be the first year of superintendents, and then the second year, we also meet as a group, and then in the third year, there are only four sessions in addition to the consultancy. So it's actually a very intense program, and there's a great deal of collegiality that occurs in this program, which is one of our goals, is to really build that among the superintendents. And really, it's, it's actually a real privilege for me to be part of this program right now. I know that to be able to share with the next generation of school leaders what we've learned and mistakes that we made and didn't have the opportunity many years ago to get this kind of support, so it's a great credit to our state that we have this program. And as Bridget said, it's a collaborative program between the Superintendent Association, the Department of Education, and the communities. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Dr. King.
I'm not sure whether you mentioned this, but have you mentored other people before? Or is Bridget your first?
Oh, she's not my first.
Okay. Well, no, because my question is...
I can tell you who I'm working with.
No, no. No. My question just is, what advice do you have for us in terms of a first-year superintendent who we know, and, you know, we're very glad to have her here, but what advice do you have for us? We can take it.
You know, I think that you have to listen, you know, that you have to listen to her, and she needs to listen to you. And the degree to which you can have shared understandings about the way you're going to work together, the more effective she will be able to be. And I think the other is, I currently work with eight superintendents just this year. And some of the superintendents that I actually work with are not new superintendents, they're veteran superintendents. I've worked with five new superintendents this year, and I've done that for, this is my fifth year.
Okay.
So, you know, there, every community has its own idiosyncrasies and their, their own norms that they're used to, and having a new superintendent is an opportunity to take a fresh look at the way that you operate. And just because you've done something for the past 20 years, doesn't mean that it has to be for the next 20 years. So it's to be open-minded and to always keep in mind the values that... that, that really drew you into this work is, is really kids. And so just to always keep that in mind. And school committees that have that as their North Star, is what their values are that drew them in. And they listen to each other and try to have as many shared understandings as possible. I think that's a, a good recipe for, for success.
Thank you.
Other questions? Dr. Goff?
Thanks, Matt, I'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you.
Moving on, uh, we now have extended day report. We have Mr. Devin Clifford.
Yes, the extended day, it's a school-age program open to students. Uh, kindergarten to grade five, um, both before and after school. And Mr. Devin Clifford is our new director of extended day. And he really brings a wealth of knowledge and experience to Wapole. He was the former director of external programs at Cardigan Mountain School. He was also the head of a summer boarding school program for over two hundred students. He's also served as the head of, uh, as dean of students for three years at Brook Charter School in Matapan. And then before that, he was a science teacher in Louisville, Kentucky. Uh, he's really excited to continue to grow this extended day program, to really enrich and support the work of our elementary schools. So, um, I'll let him present and, and give an overview of, of the program and new initiatives and, and training for the program.
Thank you. And, uh, super excited to be here. You know, uh, not just here, but also working with Wapole. Um, I started in, in early July, um, and it's just been a fun process getting to know the district and the town, um, both like without the kids and have the kids come back. So Bridget, I took my, my first part here. You keep going back, it's good, it's good. Got to check my dating profile, what I got on here. Originally from Vermont, um, I, you know, so New England, um, you know, love to hear that you guys are going to Quebec. There are all stomping grounds there. Uh, I taught in Kentucky, um, so if I get really excited, my accent goes all over the place. And yeah, teacher first. Uh, I've been in education, you know, since, since go, um, and, and I've enjoyed it and really enjoyed, you know, having my teaching experience, but also being able to leverage that into, um, administrative roles. Um, and as Bridget mentioned, the, the most recent roles have really, uh, I think have helped me tailor into this position and be really excited about it. We live, my wife, our daughter, um, we live about seven miles down the road, Washington Street. So, you know, without going into too much nostalgia in that twenty minutes at night we get with each other, we like to just sort of have that quick, like, man, life's pretty good. We like where we're at, you know, and so we, we like this kind of community. Um, another little surprise that Phil knows, and we're going to draw numbers right now, is, um, we're also adding one to our family, uh, coming March.
Congratulations.
Um, extended day, so I've done a lot of learning, um, really even starting last June when I, uh, took the position. And it's, it's been a lot of fun, you know, just sort of building my knowledge about the town, about the school system and really about the program itself. I was actually on the phone with Kathy Panos yesterday, uh, asking some questions and we sort of went down memory lane a little bit and, you know, she says, you know, ninety-nine, nineteen ninety-nine, which twenty years ago. Let that sink in for a second. Sixty-five kids at two different schools, um, in ninety-nine. And now we are, uh, three hundred and seventy students in four different sites. So twenty years seems a long time, but that is a pretty big growth, um, you know, over a short timeline for a program like ours. What I've learned, you know, the extended day program since its beginning, it's, it's filled a need for our families that need, you know, affordable care before and after school, um, continuing a growing need. Um, I've also learned that there's a lot of really good stuff going on at each one of the sites. Um, and it's just what I've, you know, observed and talking with the site coordinators and the parents and the students. Um, a lot of really good stuff going on already. But a lot of opportunities to grow and build and, and take some of the stuff that's going on and really give it a vision and direction. So a lot of strategic opportunities to really capitalize on what we're already doing and build and grow off it. We have also this year, um, not all full schedules, but with that three hundred and seventy kids continuing to grow our numbers, we've already brought in seven new adults to help out with our program, um, in varying levels. Um, and, and they've all been really welcome additions to the team. And so far, everything's been going really well with that. As I mentioned, I've spent a lot of time sort of learning about the program, but also just making sure I'm doing the, the backend, the management part of the job as well. So, you know, just learning a lot of the systems and, you know, contacts and billings and, and stuff like that. So I'm excited to have that under my belt very soon and, and, you know, in the near future to then really get focusing on the big picture stuff and planning. And then, um, the other big part of what I've been doing so far in the beginning of the year is helping out, um, student services, especially with safety care training. I'm one of the new two safety care trainers for, uh, the school district. And, um, to the point of being a dean of students for three years in a really challenging school, but then also, um, you know, running a program, a holistic program where the kids live with us, where we get to really focus on, you know, their wellbeing as a whole and seeing that. So working with the, the teachers and the safety care training, you know, some people can call it, it's a, you know, a training we gotta do. I actually really like it. I really enjoy it and it gives me a chance to get on my pulpit a little bit and really, um, help continue get our school system on a, a common language and sort of, you know, different moves, different steps we can do to help all of our kids, but especially our kids that are struggling most in those times when they don't want to be there. We don't want them to be there. Um, and the more work we can do as a district just to keep that going, keep those skills building. Um, it's, it's, it's great for the whole culture, so that's been really enjoyable to help too. We're going to work on plans or we are working on plans, uh, once we get all of the building response teams and the other people that really need the research done this year. We're gonna, um, look at scheduling in all recess and lunch monitors, recess age and lunch monitors, to get them, uh, a level of the course where we can start working with them on different de-escalation strategies or just really good, you know, teacher tricks and tips on how to communicate with little kids, um, and how to, you know, go into a tough situation and get a turn successful as quick as possible and in a way of, you know, both you and the kid to have the, the best result. So excited to take that program and, and continue to expand it. Um, with the extended day staff, we've also talked about finding times to parcel out the, the skills of the safety care curriculum for them as well. Where are we going? So this is the fun stuff, right? That's what I've been doing. Um, now where I want us to go and then what I hope to give you updates on, you know, continuing throughout the year into next year is, um, I think we're going to continue to see enrollment grow every year. Just, you know, going, more and more families with young kids are working longer and longer hours and there's going to be a continuing need for, um, care. And, and, you know, if I'm making the choice, I will make the choice for my daughter in a few years. I want her to stay at school and I want her to stay with her friends. I want to have her, keep having that curriculum and having that fun. So, you know, we're going to make that choice as well and I, I want to have that continuing being a, a, a great option for our families. The way we're going to keep doing that, I've got a couple thoughts here of making sure we're, we're continuing supportive steps for the families. We'll dig into there, being strategic about our, our space, our staffing, our planning, increasing our training and then really taking a deep dive into the program that we offer, uh, for supportive steps. I, you know, it's not just all me, but me, site coordinators, making sure that we are accessible, friendly, approachable, right? I love the fact that I can hold to, you give me a call, I'm going to get back to you that day. You know, if something happens, we'll, we'll be on the phone that night. Um, I just want to make sure that we are accessible option for the family, you know, um, and we're part of their school and their town and they should feel like they have access to us in that way. We've got to connect some systems. Separate and same has been a term I've been using for some people in a good way and a bad way. You know, the, the, the way that we can improve, I shouldn't say bad, the way we can prove for separate and same is, you know, one example. If you want to make a change to extended day, you know, even though your kid's going to the school and they're going to extended day at a school, you've got to finish three steps to, you know, three people to contact to make that change, right? So we should get our systems in line to where a parent can tell us one thing, hey, Johnny's not going to stay today, you know, and tell us once and we can get that communicated out. So it's a small example of, you know, separate and same props, uh, processes that are not working in our favor right now and we've got to touch up and, and get better at. I think, uh, we also are going to look at moving some of our systems right now. We're, we're pen and paper, you know, check and cash. So to move some of those systems quicker we can to, on their registrations or tapping into stuff that already existed in the school systems. Um, and then just making that, you know, saving our parents that five, ten, twenty minutes every month, um, to, to lower their stress level as well. So we'll get a look at that. Strategic space with, with the numbers growing, we've already made some steps here. Um, you know, Voiden has the highest numbers on Wednesday and Thursday right now. Seventy-plus kids in a program, so we've already started talking about how can we separate that program and provide some, you know, K to one learning reading groups and some four and five study club over in the, uh, media center instead of the cafeteria and the rest of them. So small things like that where we can continue to grow and continue to be strategic about, you know, taking this program that's for all of our K to five kids, but then separating it out and hitting what those kids need. Another example, not just age difference, but also, you know, what they want to do. We've got kids that want to come to after school and play board games all day and that's the perfect for them. So we got to provide that atmosphere. We also have some kids that want to come and run around for the next three hours. We need to provide that option, right? We've got some other kids that want to sit and, you know, play cards or, uh, draw and, you know, crafts and stuff like that. So we've got to tap into that as well. So just being strategic about how we're balancing, what we're providing to the kids and making sure we're giving them options to, you know, have a great experience with us and, and continue to enrich themselves. Training. So this year, we actually did our first, uh, extended day staff orientation, one day before the school year started. So we got everybody together just to get on the same language. And, um, I'm excited to continue to grow that and just make that more of a norm. Um, and, and continue to not only give our extended day assistants, who, let's be honest, they're not teachers. They don't have the same training. They're great people, they mean well, and they, they do a really good job, but they could do an even better job with, um, some tailored down training about working with kids, especially, um, how things have changed in the last decade or so and how we approach stuff now. So I'm excited to continue that training and, and I've teased that with all the sites and all the staff right now and they're all really excited about it as well. The safety care de-escalation strategies I spoke to, I'm excited to get those into our team as well. Peer problem solving is something that, uh, I've actually built over the last couple of years, putting together some different philosophies and some stuff that we would do, um, you know, basically out of necessity in my previous role as dean of students, saying, we got to get better at solving these issues quicker and more effectively and, and more long, uh, long lasting. So coaching, um, coaching our coordinators up on another small example of, you know, a kid brings a problem to you, instead of saying, hey, I'm going to go talk to him, go play, it's bring them both in and, you know, have the perspective sharing and have the collaborative problem solving going on with the kids, modeling it for them. So small stuff like that and just getting our, uh, coordinators and our assistants those skills. Um, I also have a meeting with Playworks, which is another curriculum. I'm meeting with them on Wednesday to really dig in and see how we can possibly set a relationship with them going forward, um, both for extended day and possibly for recess aides as well. That's a program, I tried to look on their website to get a catchy tagline, but basically they, they've got a whole curriculum about how to teach kids and adults how to play and have a more successful recess where, you know, you're, you're avoiding some of the typical pitfalls of recess that will spill into the classroom and can really mess up a culture. Um, and you're also leveraging some of the, you know, things that kids want to do in a more positive way, teach them how to do that. And then programming, this is the other fun part I'm really excited to dig into. Um, a couple of examples where I think we have some opportunity to really leverage, um, the, the day-to-day stuff. I think a lot of that program's going to come out of, um, with our training and just having more of that, um, you know, in-the-moment coaching from our assistants. But there's also bigger things. Um, you know, we've got an early release day tomorrow. We're going to do business as usual tomorrow. I'm hoping by Wednesday, or sorry, by October is our early release day. We've got, you know, at least some sort of, um, uh, field trip for the older kids or some sort of bigger, um, opportunity that they can sign up for and take advantage of. So it's not, you know, so that, that early release day can then be an opportunity we can jump in and get some more, you know, whether it be a ropes course or, you know, just a fun trip to, to get the fourth and fifth graders excited. So there's a model out there, there's other school districts that do this. Um, and I'm really excited just to dig into it and start figuring out the nooks and crannies and how we can make that up. And, and once we got the model there, then we can just keep on rolling and continue to build. Morning movements and reader leader competitions, I'm hoping to unroll these in the next few weeks. Um, and basically just small competitions between the schools, leverage some good science and good activity. You know, again, giving opportunities for those kids that need the movement, some, uh, some intentionality behind that, right? So some just programming that we can do that really would cost nothing and, and we've got the staffing, we've got the space. We just need to set the outline and, and press go with it. Um, and then I've also, uh, put it out to all of our parents and I'm going to do this, continue, um, press them to try and get some more local business outreach. Um, I had a great conversation with one parent that runs a jewelry shop. I said, hey, it'd be really great if you could have someone come in and do a thirty-minute tutorial of how to make a piece of jewelry and, you know, the kids bring it home and all of a sudden we get to send out a flyer about how you came in and helped out our kids. So, um, looking forward to continuing to look into those avenues as well and just bring the community into our kids, um, and at the same time, providing our kids more opportunities there.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Very, very exciting. Um, obviously, uh, uh, just my initial comments, uh, before I open up to, to my colleagues, it's wonderful to hear, I think, something that all of us were committed to would be that increased amount of training that you've been, you've been facilitating, which is, is wonderful. And I think it's great that you, you come from a diversified educational background. So you've, you've got a lot of different tools in the toolkit and you're bringing a lot of youthful energy, which is also exciting. Apparently Jen really wants to go on the rope course with you.
I think that sounds fantastic. No, I mean, early release days, it's, you hear parents talking about, you know, what am I going to do with my kid? And just to have an opportunity like that, I think that's a, a really great thing.
And I also just, I, I like, number one, when you talk about just sort of the connectivity with, within the community and trying to find ways that I think by the very nature, as you talk about extended day, are going to be different for different kids or whatever, but how do we, how do we find as many plugs as possible to bring the community into our schools more and to kind of highlight through our schools what thing is going on in the community? I think that's all, um, wonderful. The only, uh, advice I would give you is maybe you should definitely sit down with, um, our, um, rec director as well because they do, uh, there's a lot of things that we sort of, um, as I think you, you articulate, as we kind of, uh, reexamine what we do as a district in, in this, um, in this kind of new time. I think it would be great to kind of work collaboratively, see, they, they have some things that perhaps, I'm on the rec committee too, so it's not, it's not as if I, um, I, I talk about this as a bubble. I think, I think there's some stuff that, that rec has done for a while that really, um, they may be looking to, to jettison and would be really good for us to, to move into and vice versa. So I think there's just so much opportunity there. And, um, just it's such an exciting thing to, to, um, enliven and, um, we're very grateful. Further questions from my colleagues?
I just wanted to say, it's not a question, really fabulous presentation, and I'm excited about the training for the staff. And my oldest was in there in two thousand and one, so it's come a long way. So this is really, uh, great, exciting to hear. Thanks for all your work.
Further questions? Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have a special education program report by Dr. John Quealy.
Dr. Quealy, I'm not going to say too much because I don't want to steal your thunder. But you're, yeah, we'll provide a special education program report about opening just go, very similar to what the principals did at the last school committee meeting.
Good evening. Before I get into, to my, um, my topics, I just wanted to, uh, extend my congratulations to the Best Buddy Program. Um, I know at Central Office, we are a work site, uh, for the eighteen to twenty-year-old kids, uh, twenty-two-year-old kids. Uh, and it's fabulous having them up there. It's great working side by side, so it's a wonderful program. So I wanted to extend, uh, my congratulations, uh, to that program, so it's, it's a fabulous thing, so. Devin has a lot of charisma to follow, so. So I'll, I'll touch on a couple of points. Some of them are extensions from some of the things that we had talked about last year. Um, just to give you a couple of numbers to begin with, uh, I looked at our, our ending data for June of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, we, we, at that point, we had a total of four hundred and ninety-five, uh, students with IEPs in the district, forty-seven of which were out of district. Uh, I looked at those against, uh, our June two thousand and eighteen numbers that we reported, uh, to DESI and that total was five hundred and seventeen students with IEPs, um, fifty out of district. So I don't, I don't see a real significant change, uh, from one year to the next, uh, at the end of year data. But I think important to just sort of keep tabs.
But I think important to just sort of keep tabs and, and give you updates on, on the numbers that we're, we're looking at. One of the things I was gonna touch on, uh, as you know, every year, we do, uh, an evaluation of one of our programs in the district. And after much deliberation between, uh, myself and the team chairs and central administration, this year, we're choosing the preschool, uh, to do our evaluation at that program. Rhonda Taft Farrell is gonna join us again, um, to do that evaluation for us. We thought this was an opportune time to do that, given that there's new leadership, uh, there's growing numbers at the preschool and from what we're seeing, some growing severity of needs. So, we wanted to make sure that the program has, uh, the flexibility to, uh, to meet all the needs of our three to five-year-olds. Rhonda started, uh, this week, she was actually down there this week, um, beginning to, um, pull data, pull IEPs. She'll interview staff, um, she'll reach out to parents, I think very similar, um, to what she had done last year in the DLP program. We're anticipating two to three months of work from Rhonda, um, with the report sometime after Thanksgiving. Uh, and I can certainly come back and, and review that with you when, when we have that, so. Uh, I wanted to let you know, we do have new specialized counsel. Mary Jo Reedy, who was our attorney for a long, long time, my understanding, um, took full retirement in August. So, I do wanna thank her for her service. I know in my short tenure here, um, she, she guided us through a, a number of situations that, uh, were, were certainly helpful. I did solicit, uh, a recommendation from her, um, as well as Dan Brown for, for new counsel. Both of them identified Nuttall, McAvoy, and Joyce. And so, in talking with, uh, with Dr. Goff and Mr. Hahn, um, that's the choice that we went with. Nuttall, McAvoy, and Joyce are a firm that, that do represent some of our neighbors, uh, Foxborough and Byco notably. I've already been in a couple of meetings with Mr. Nuttall, and I think we're, we're in good hands. So, I wanted to update you on that. I wanna talk a little bit about staff dynamics. We, we had a, a bit of turnover this year that I hadn't seen in, in my first two years here, so I, I think it was worth noting here tonight. In total, um, we had thirteen professional staff members that turned over, um, due to either retirements or, or moving on to other districts. Seven specialized teachers, two SLPs, one psychologist, high school department chair, high school team chair, and preschool director. Some of these are existing Walpole staff who've moved into those positions, but I thought it worth noting that, that we do have a number of staff members who, who've turned over this year. And, and I think because of that, that's gonna drive some of our professional development this year. You, we, we discussed this with our team chairs and, and given some of the turnover, especially at the elementary level, we're gonna be soliciting the Wilson Reading Group, uh, to come out to the district, um, and provide an introductory course for us so that we can get our new folks up and running with, uh, Wilson Structured Reading, uh, as a number of our folks who left, are taking that with them, so, so I think we need to replenish that. And then finally, I wanted to update you, um, on something we, we'd started talking about last year, uh, the Homeful Little Wonders. Uh, I know some representatives from the home were here last year, uh, to update you on the progress of opening their school. They have made some significant progress since that time. They have hired nearly an entire staff, um, and they are getting closer to opening. Uh, they held an open house this past week, um, so I anticipate them opening soon. I've not heard a specific date, but, um, my sense is that's coming soon. We do have kids who are, continue to enter the residence, uh, side of, of the facility. And our, our out-of-district coordinator, Christina Pine, uh, meets weekly with representatives from, from the home to work with them on where the kids, um, will be placed, uh, educationally, whether that's in the high school, Johnson Middle School, or potentially an out-of-district placements. But I wanted to give you an update, as, as I believe Clifford Academy, um, will be coming online fairly soon, is my understanding. So, those are the major, major bullets that I have, and if folks, folks have questions.
Just a couple, uh, quick ones surrounding, uh, well, first, thank you, obviously, uh, for, um, giving your report to us this evening. Around Longview Farm, just as a general barometer, uh, continuing to be a better process and, um, a good working relationship for you and your staff?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, some of their administration, uh, has worked really well with Christina, myself. I know the Director of Clinical Services over there has worked really well with Christina. Uh, I think a lot of what we're trying to do, um, is educate their staff and educate the, the DCF representatives on how the educational process works and how special education process works. Though I think sometimes there's some assumptions that are made by, by the home staff and DCF, uh, in terms of where kids can go uh, and, and where it's really the IEP kinda drives where kids go. So, I think there's been a lot of education, I think it's been received, so I am encouraged. I think there's certainly still some things to work on, um, but that, that piece I am encouraged about.
Excellent. Very good. Question, other questions, I'm gonna, Ms. Machini?
John, do you have a sense of, um, what's driving the turnover, aside from maybe normal retirements?
There, there were a number of retirements, uh, from what I've heard and, and some of the, the other turnover situations were commuting, you know, folks being closer to home. So, I, I don't think there's any one factor that's negative in terms of our district. It was just kind of an anomaly worth mentioning this year, uh, and, and really will be a driver of our, our PD, uh, in Special Ed with, with the Wilson. But I, I don't think there's any one thing I could point to.
Yeah, I just, you know, I didn't know if it was just, um, the difficulty of the job and more demands and more requirements, anything like that, where people are.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so, I think they're, the folks who are.
Could offer more support, you know, I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah, I think the folks who are leaving, from what I've heard and, and personal conversations, are, are closer to home. You know, taking jobs closer to home, um, and the retirements, and that, that happens. It's just, we had sort of a confluence of all that together this year and a turnover number that was larger than, than my first two years here. So, I just thought it was worth noting.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Further questions? Who's got it?
I have two different ones, John. Related to Longview Farm, when you say the school is gonna be opening, that means the school that the, the, some students will attend full-time on their property, correct?
Yes, that, well, as long as their home districts are okay with that. I think what's happening is kids are coming in, kids are being placed in the home by DCF, and they're coming from a number of surrounding districts. Some of those kids will come to Walpole High because their IEPs are such that, that we can service those kids. Some come in without a district IEPs. When that's happening, then it becomes our job to find placements for those students locally, 'cause sometimes they're coming from far away. What's happening is the place, there aren't many placements left, um, as kids have started to move in and, and the, the demand is, is more than the supply. So, I think Clifford will, will increase the supply of placements so that we're not working as hard to find placements for kids because there aren't that many left. That's, I, I see that as probably the biggest advantage of Clifford opening soon.
Okay. So, about how many kids are living at Longview Farm right now, would you say?
I'd say somewhere between twenty and thirty.
And how do you expect that to change? Will it, when, when the Clifford School opens, does that automatically mean that the number goes from twenty to thirty to, to like forty to fifty, or is it not related in that way?
I don't think it's really related.
Okay, okay.
I believe the max census at, um, at the home is somewhere north of forty. I, I think where it will help us is, um, the, the, the man-hours put in trying to find placements for kids who need placements might become a little bit easier, again, with, with all those spots at, um, at the school opening up as a potential source of, of placement.
Okay, and, um... Let me forget my other question related to, to Longview Farm. There was, um, well, let me ask my other one. We talked about the fact that each year, you're, um, looking at different sites. Can you give us at some point, not tonight, but, um, a summary of changes that have happened at Walpole High School as a result of the, the study that was done there two years ago? And same with the DLP program, so in other words, keep us up to date in terms of we learned some things and this is what we've done about them.
Would you like something on paper that I can submit and then maybe answer questions about, uh, in another visit?
That would probably be the easiest, but anything that works for, is, is fine. I'm just, you know, people, every once in a while, ask us and, you know, I, I just don't know how to, how to answer.
Maybe the visual might be helpful.
Yeah.
Blabbering, yeah.
No, whichever method you prefer is, is fine with me, it's fine with me. Um, just getting back to Longview Farm, the issue there previously had been that your department was spending a crazy amount of time. And there was some discussion about if you need support, you may be able to get it from the DCF people. Please let us know if that conversation needs to happen. That was the other thing I was gonna, gonna say.
We, we circle, Christina and I circle back to it from time to time and keep tabs on it. And I think we're in a spot where I think we're comfortable having that conversation if it's needed.
Okay, good.
If we get there, we will certainly come to you with it.
Thank you.
Further questions? I just got an invitation to a rope, uh, course opening up there, so Jen will be excited about that, that's two in one night. Right? No, this is the farm, actually. So, I think, um, that was just to your point about when they're opening, that was, I believe, mid-October, so. The Longview Farm sent, uh, in my day job, us an invite to their rope course, uh, opening in the middle of October. So, I think perhaps, um, they are really starting to gear up with the services.
I think they're close, I think they're close. Uh, I know Christina was over there for the open house, she met some of the staff, um, and they brought in a new, um, Director of Student Services, um, that Christine and I have both been with in the past. So, I think from that standpoint, we're, we're encouraged.
Very good. Thank you, Doctor.
Moving rapidly along, we have the technology report and one-to-one update.
Yes, in our.
Anne Oppen?
We'll provide you with the, um, technology report and one-to-one Chromebook update and, as well as any other initiatives implemented.
Well, I, I'm gonna cover three, three items tonight, I think that'll keep it succinct, and it's, uh, just a month into school, so that kinda fits the mold. So, I, I am happy to present this, uh, just an, an update for you on the, um, technology and digital learning components, uh, as far as the opening of the school goes. The big one, obviously, is I think the one-to-one program that we were able to distribute three hundred Chromebooks to incoming freshmen, three hundred Chromebooks to the seventh grade students as well. And that is building a strong sustainability plan through that, also the capital budget that was presented, and will be up for town meeting. So, um, the, the Chromebooks were distributed very quickly, you know, we're getting into the, the mojo there, uh, getting them out pretty quickly. So, it literally enabled this, the teachers and the students to hit the ground running with, um, digital tools and resources, right out of the gate. So, that's, uh, you know, when I look back, it's, it's a big difference from even five years ago when, you know, you had to kinda struggle to get these, the equipment up and running. This is up and running, day one. And that capital budget, just to reiterate, is, is, uh, really, I think, uh, a wonderful sustainability plan that, um, will enable all our students, particularly those in grades two through twelve, kind of a, um, updated, um, uh, the ability to have an updated, uh, Chromebook readily available to them on demand as the need arises versus having to wait or share. The second item is the, the restructuring of the technology and the digital learning staff this, um, this year. It, it's brought us an online, uh, help desk ticketing system to streamline and document technology-related issues. Uh, we've been conducting weekly training sessions with the digital learning coaches and the elementary library, uh, media technicians who will now be handling the initial troubleshooting and repair of devices and equipment. And our centralized support team works closely with the building-based staff. The school year always starts with a flurry of, uh, wild flurry, I'll call it, of issues as classrooms are dismantled all over the summer, uh, for cleaning purposes. And then, the, um, reconstructing them and getting equipment nudged to start up and cables connected to the right ports, um, is always a bit of a, of, you know, a challenge, unique to the start of the school year. So, that said, I, I just do wanna applaud the efforts of our staff. They've been incredible and collaborative and willing to learn and, uh, take these things on. I pulled a report from the ticketing system, there's been a hundred and, a thousand incidents, tickets that have been resolved so far since school started in the last month. So, I think we're gonna get some good data out of that as well and see where our pockets are for opportunity. It will help us, um, help guide us with, um, you know, equipment that might be becoming outdated or, you know, give us some, some ability to stay a little, uh, ahead of the curve in some instances. And we'll, um, continue to monitor as we go along. The other important initiative really, um, this year was, is the fact that we're, we're taking the, um, student privacy, data, sorry, it's late, student data privacy, um, to the, to kind of the next level. We joined the Student Data Privacy Alliance in partnership with TECC, the Education Cooperative, to, um, construct, uh, contracts, legal binding contracts for vendors who provide an online service that students will be logging into. And the, the point of that is, is that especially with all the free products that are out there, you just sign in and, um, it's, it's really, uh, important that kids learn, but the vendors are held accountable to make sure that they're protecting that student data and not using it for targeting ads and, and, um, misusing it or they don't have sufficient, um, security systems in place on their own side to make sure that that data isn't, that's gonna be hacked, um, and sold or whatever. And then importantly, also at the end of, or the termination of our use of that product, that they, they have a, uh, plan to effectively, um, and securely discard the data. So, w- we started the initiative, it's been two years since we started collecting the initial data and getting the contracts. We made announcements out to staff last year, and then just prior to the school year starting, we submitted to sta, all the staff, uh, a list of all the, the status of all of different online applications, so. It's been, um, a, a lot of, you know, questions asked and, you know, what do you do when a vendor is not gonna sign a contract? And, you know, we're still working through a lot of those details, but, um, I think it's just an important awakening for everybody, all of us really, that, um, there's a lot of information out there in cyberspace and we need to start thinking, especially when it relates to our kids, what they're providing, what they're giving up, you know, what the cost of free is, um, when it comes to providing your information, so. Those are the top three, um, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you might have about any of those initiatives or any other initiatives.
Excellent, and obviously, thank you very much for taking the time out, uh, to join us at Finance Committee as well. And you're a great advocate for, um, the, the capital needs of, of your department. And I think you're, you're our best kind of spokesperson around, uh, the one-to-one initiative. And we've, we've been able to be so successful over the years, uh, because you've been right out there. Other questions for Ann around?
I just also like to thank the digital learning coaches and the media support technicians and also the centralized support team. And I think Bill and I would, would both agree that getting into the classrooms, we really have been able to see the, the implementation of instructional technology and how it's transforming learning. I mean, it's so early on, you know, right out of the gate, um, what these students are doing in the classroom and it's thanks to the cooperation of the teachers and, and the coaches.
I was just gonna ask, um, just a refresher for the community, what grades now have one-on-one Chromebook access? And what grades, you know, do they stay at school and how does?
So, all grades seven through twelve are a one-to-one take-home model. The students get them and they keep them until they're no longer with the district, basically. This year, I, I neglected to mention too, at the end, the seniors turned in some older equipment that we had, but it's still viable and that equipment's gonna be, um, redistributed down to elementary this year. And then, but our grades, I, I would say with fair confidence that grades three through five, um, and I'm sorry, three through six, um, students have ready access to a cart with a device in it in proximity to their classroom. Where in sixth grade, it's subject area-based and obviously, uh, elementary, it's grade level-based. The age of those devices, um, you know, grade six seems to be in a little bit better shape. And then, you know, as you creep down into the elementary grades, depending on the device type and the age of the device, you know, which is where the capital budget will really make a significant impact. And the goal is to have grades two through, today's goal is to, to have grades two through five, um, at elementary have, uh, ready access, a cart in every classroom that the students will have access to.
And the grade six?
Grade six is cart-based as well.
It is cart-based, okay.
Yes. Um, and they have, uh, at this point, their, their devices are on the newer side. There's still.
So when you said the elementary had a goal, it's because grade six already has more access, is what you're saying?
Yes, exactly. Exactly. Yes, right.
Thank you.
Representative Mahoney.
Um, I just was wondering, is there a reason why grade six doesn't have their, the one-to-one Chromebooks? Like is, like, so it doesn't go with the rest of the middle school? Is there a reason for that or?
So, I mean, it's a, it was a cutoff, really. We just started the, this is the, our third year of, of one-to-one, starting in ninth grade, and then we crept it down to eighth grade and now to seventh grade. What will tomorrow or next year be? You know, um, they definitely have access to the device, but it not as a take-home model. At the, this year.
Just, Ms. Galavan.
Mine is different. It's not on one-to-one, so if you wanna talk about that. Did you wanna say something?
I just, uh, since we have, uh, Representative Mahoney here, y- you use it on a day-to-day basis. Could you just kind of?
Yeah.
Give us a frontline explanation of like?
I mean, it is very useful. Like, I use it in, like, the majority of classes pretty much every day. And, um, usually there's minimal issues that go along with the Chromebooks. And I think that makes things run a lot smoother. And when there are issues, they're resolved very quickly by like technicians and other things. Like, people that have broken Chromebooks can just like bring them down and then they're fixed within the week. And I think that everyone having ready access to a Chromebook, like, that they would not usually have access to in some situations, like, benefits the school overall. So that's what I think.
Excellent. Thank you. Good feedback. Ms. Galavan.
Thank you, Brendan. Um, my que, I wanted to understand the data privacy piece a little bit more, 'cause I was at the tech board meeting recently. And, y- you know, it sounds like they've blossomed into, I wanna say, seven thousand contracts have been signed. They're the state of Massachusetts, Rhode Island, and a third states, like, contact person. It for, i- if you wanna sign up for a good data priv, priv, sorry, data privacy program, what work has to happen on your end? And are we a hundred percent doing? Like, do our teachers know how to access it so that we don't have to worry about data privacy at all? Or are we getting there? That's, I didn't understand that part.
Sure. I think we're moving towards it. I think that as with anything new and different, you know, um, and let's face it, technology has become just very innate for people. You know, they're constantly, teachers are constantly looking for, you know, how to, how to, you know, engage children further, the kids. And they're out online all the time or getting recommendations. And so it isn't on their mind, oh, oops, I gotta check and see, do we have a data privacy agreement signed? But they're starting to for sure. I'm getting a lot of questions, um, and feedback and the, uh, they're, they're able to initiate a privacy contract if they don't see one now. So from a tech perspective, as far as what, what the workload that I have now on it is far less than when it started, when I, we had, I literally had to physically copy the contracts, have them signed, scan them over, get them. I mean, you know, just that piece of it, um, has been minimized with the help of tech. Rayma Holly has been hired. She manages the contract. She shift, gets them out, returns them. They've streamlined the whole legal cross side of it with, um, not having a full contract every time, but having an exhibit that, you know, the vendors can then just sign off on for each district instead of these massive contracts. They have expanded beyond, uh, New Hampshire, Rhode Island, but also California, um, and other states who had their own initiatives have also joined this similar alliance. And the, the goal of that is really to build that, that power, you know, the, the power of numbers to, um, let vendors know that this is serious.
Exactly.
Yeah, you know, and if they're not signing, then they're gonna show up as not approved and, you know, there's still some struggles with that. We still have things shown up as not approved, but they're actually still in some state of awareness. So the way, and I don't have the control on the website to change it. So there's still some work to be done on the communication piece, but.
Okay. Well, I guess the one thing I would add is, it sounded like this came about at Tech because some, some of the districts had problems with parents feeling that their student's data was not secured. So that's the way, what I heard was there was a big to-do in one of the towns and that, you know, so if we can make sure our teachers are aware of the fact that it's preventative from our end to try to, try to make sure that they're using secured programs, it would be helpful. Thank you.
Excellent. Further questions in the committee? Seeing none. Thank you so much, Ann.
Thank you.
Moving on to all business. Revisit the school committee meeting calendar, three November seventh, school committee meeting. There's a conflict for Dr. Goff and Ms. Galavan and others who may want to go to the MASC conference, uh, that day. So we were thinking about moving it to Tuesday. And I think Mary's gonna put out a poll. This is more of a point of information. Uh, if that works for folks, I'll move our regularly scheduled school committee meeting from, uh, November the seventh to Tuesday, November the fifth. Um, and we'll, we'll vote to do that formally at the October twenty-one, um, school committee meeting. But just to keep it on people's radar, so, uh, we wanna make sure everybody can be here. And the MASC, MASs conferences is a, is a great opportunity to gather with our colleagues from other school districts. So we don't wanna, um, we want people to go to that as well. So. Moving on. Policy JLC, help, student health services and regulations.
Sure. Um, so what I did is try to make it as readable as possible. So what we did here, and I did, two copies. One was highlighted, uh, in yellow was all of the changes that we proposed to make. There's another copy where it just highlighted the questions that you had from the last school committee meeting. And I figured that that was probably a, a better way to go to, well. So the first, the first piece was the, the question about the, um, the age of majority. And, um, we, um, talked to Dan Brown. And if you look on page one, which is apparent, it was changed to a parent guardian student who has reached the age of eighteen. And then that's also in the, in the end of that paragraph. That, um, was, um, Dan added that age of majority language. So that's where, where it needed to go. The second item was on the next page, and that was the one that, um, Kathy Garvin had mentioned in, in trying to figure out why that piece was in it, because it looked like it was just kind of dropped in there. Um, what, um, Dan had indicated that is if you look at the last sentence, two paragraphs previous, and it really says the Wapo Public Schools should maintain a medical emergency response plan as required by law. An emergency procedures handbook shall be utilized by Wapo Public Schools personnel for handling emergencies. Emergency procedures shall include, include the following. There's two things that, items that need to be included in the emergency procedure handbook. And that highlighted portion is the second. So that's why at first, if you just read it in isolation, like, it, it, because it's not, it's just saying that those are the two items that need to be included. So that has to remain in there because they're required to have, um, an emergency procedure handbook. The other question I believe you had was, um, whether it populates if a parent changes. And I believe that Kathy gave you that information, that, um, it, it stated that if the child, if the parent updates a child's information, it does populate a medical profile form. So those were the, um, three requests that we were able to provide answers for you.
Further questions, Dr. Goff, Ms. Galavan.
Can I just suggest on that one that you were just talking about, that we like bullet them or number them? Like?
Oh, that one?
Yes. Like that one is provision for care beyond first aid.
Oh, in the actual document?
In the document. And then two is information relative to, you know? Yeah.
We'll go with it and then go with it.
Thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the policy change as amended this evening? So vote.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Mr. Breen. Second, I mean, it needs to, all is in favor, opposed, abstain, six, zero, zero. Very good. Moving right along to capital budget. Dr. Goff.
Sure. Um, Mr. Frisch, Anne Arpyn, Stephen and Bush, myself, among the members of the school committee, we met with the finance committee on Monday. And, um, we're pleased to announce that the finance committee is unanimous. They approved the school department requests for, um, the Wapo High School building study, the four hundred thousand dollars. Also, the technology infrastructure improvements and the Chrome, uh, Chromebook purchases. And that's also the three-year plan as well as security camera upgrades. So, um, I just wanted to thank all the town boards and administration that support these articles. And our next stop is town meeting.
Excellent. Questions or comments on capital budget? Moving on, superintendent's report. Dr. Goff.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving it to us in hard copies. Everyone's on feverish scribbling.
No one has to scribble notes now. You can just, uh, follow, follow along.
Good stuff.
So it's been a busy two weeks, um, we were not since the last school committee meeting. Many of the open houses were held last week and this week. I was fortunate enough to be able to attend Elm Street School and Byrd Middle School. And this week, um, I was at Fisher, Opus Road and, and Johnson Middle Schools. It was, it was fantastic to, to see the families, the teachers' classrooms, the displays of student artwork. I know, uh, Wapo High School has their back-to-school night that's happening, um, this evening. I know, uh, Kristen's in, in attendance as well. It was, it was really nice, um, even though, you know, not able to attend back-to-school Monday. Just, it's amazing, as you had mentioned, for all the, all the different clubs at the high school. Just on a Monday going through, you know, I happened to, to one stopping at the student council, but it was postponed until Tuesday. So I thought, okay, you know, just walk around the building. And, you know, to see the speech and debate team, I mean, the amount of students in that classroom and what they were doing. And then a couple of students, one student comes down from the, from the feminist group and, and is, is also on the speech team. And then a few students leave the speech team to run off to the musical rehearsal. And it's just really, um, just a bustle-up activity after school for these students. The Wapo Police Department, um, provided critical incident presentations to our elementary school students. Um, I was able to attend the K-2 Boyd and presentation. The, the police department does a, a good job at tailoring each presentation so that we ensure that it is age-appropriate. Um, and just to note, and this will go out to families, hopefully tomorrow, if not early next week, on Tuesday, April fifteenth, as part of the Safe School Initiatives, Wapo, um, Police Department, they're going to give a presentation to explain the ALIS program. That's the Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate, which has been presented to both the staff and the students over the past year. And what ALIS does is it authorizes and empowers our individuals to, um, really either take human action, build this infrastructure and provide communication options in the event of an incident. And this presentation, what it's going to do is it'll introduce our parents and guardians to the terms that we use throughout the district by our staff and students, a chance to review the age-appropriate videos that were shown to the students, and also describe certain situations where ALIS might be initiated. And then there's also, there'll also be a Q and A at the end. So again, that's October fifteenth, seven o'clock PM at the high, Wapo High School. Um, in terms of visits these past two weeks, I spent a few hours each, uh, at Opus Road School and the Boyd and Elementary Schools, meeting with principals and visiting classrooms. I was able to see the foundations program in action. Couldn't be happier, um, to watch, you know, the K-2. Um, for example, just a quick example, in second grade, the students, um, you know, had their cards. And let's say, for example, they were spelling the word, you know, sick. And they had to, uh, hold up whether it was a C, a K, or a CK. You know, the students all hold up the CK. And the teacher asked, "So why is it a CK?" And of course, we're in the back and going, "Okay, let's see if they know. Why is it a CK?" And the students raised their hand and, and, and one boy said, "Well, it's because it's a short I. It's just a matter of fact." I mean, and, and they're really, they're talking about diagrams and, um, couldn't, couldn't be more pleased. And then also, um, the implementation of the Lucy Cawkins program. I was able to take a look at that in fourth grade. Able to see the continued implementation of guided math. And that's when students are working in small groups on specific standards that are taught to really challenge students, but also individualize instruction at the same time. Next month, Kathy, oops, she's the Director of Diversity, um, Equity and Inclusion at MECO. She's going to be presenting to the OPR staff on implicit bias. She also attended our Administration and Leadership Council and did, uh, professional development, I believe at, um, Johnson last year, and presented in our January's Ed Camp. She's also gonna be coming to other schools, um, in the, in the following months at their staff meetings and their curriculum meetings. So, um, she's a valuable resource and we're happy to have her back in Wapo. Just on a side note related to that, um, Bill Hahn has set up, starting October ninth, um, several teachers in the district that are going to participate in the course Understanding Identities: An Examination of Implicit Bias That Can Have on Our Actions, especially in education. And this is the second time we, we run this course. So we're excited about it. Um, Bill Hahn, um, has visited, uh, every new teacher's classroom. And, uh, he has the Teacher Mentor Program up and running. And will also be facilitating, uh, with the EL, uh, EL, English Learner PAC meeting next month. For which part of that they'll be talking about, um, getting the Adult English Educate, um, Education Program up and running. Did you wanna mention anything?
Yeah, I, I, one of the great privileges of this job is getting to work with new staff. As many of you know, the common statistic is that fifty percent of new teachers leave the job within five years. It's actually a little bit below fifty percent. So it's really important to us here at Wapo to support our new staff. So Dr. Goff has, uh, encouraged and supported me to make sure that I'm getting out to all the buildings to meet specifically with the new staff, to know that we're not just doing a four-day orientation this whole year and the next couple of years as part of the transition. So I just wanted to share, 'cause I think it's worth doing to show our support, a couple of great, um, quick anecdotes of the great work our new staff is doing. So Linda Anderson, who's a new nurse at Johnson Middle School, uh, their open house planned, uh, in plain sight. Um, she had it actually set up right outside her office. So every parent that's walking the hall could stop and see a, a bedroom set up to talk about, um, some things that, uh, you may or should know as a parent that could be in your teenager's or child's bedroom. Um, that's a program that's run through many different hospitals. And she tracked down that resource on her own and thought of this terrific, uh, resource to bring to our parents. Elizabeth Ryan, who's a new third-grade teacher at Elm, I had an opportunity to go watch her implement the Lucy Cawkins writing curriculum, uh, days after she received professional development in it. And just to watch a, a teacher come right out of school and be able to have such an incredible rapport with her students and implement this new curriculum was really exciting. Uh, Krista Ganty's a new health teacher at the high school. Uh, it was the first couple of weeks of school and I watched her, um, do a quick, uh, touch base with every single one of the students. Where they had to say, on a scale of one to five, how are you today and why? Now, to get a room full of freshmen and sophomores to do that with a great, um, honesty and, and actually respect to one another in just two and a half weeks of teaching says a lot about the classroom and the dynamic you're setting up. We talk about SEL in terms of like programming at a district or school level, but it's really important we understand that SEL happens first and most effectively at a classroom level. And when a teacher can do that in the first two and a half weeks of school, or kids will, will students, excuse me, will go around, um, and share that before they start. To kind of get a pulser room is pretty special. And then finally, um, I had an opportunity to see Leslie Rosenthal, who's our math intervention specialist at the high school. Uh, I walked, I, um, visited the, our English language space, um, with, uh, Ms. Fran Payton. And I, I, and it was an incredible space of students just working together and collaboratively and getting some extra support. And I got to see Leslie work individually with a student who. And I got to see Leslie work individually with a student who maybe didn't speak the English language perfect yet, but certainly was engaging in supporting math. So I just wanted to share a few of those anecdotes and I appreciate to be able to do that because I want to make sure our new staff feels supported, but also, most importantly, that you're aware of the great work that they're doing and will continue that support and I'll keep sharing things like this throughout the year.
Thank you, Bill. Moving on, we also conducted our building walkthroughs, so thank you for those of you that were able to make it. Last Tuesday, we went to Wapo High School, Byrd Middle School, and Elm Street. I publicly want to thank all the custodians who helped us out on that night, taking time out of their hectic schedules to show us around and to comment as well. And we were able to see the new projects and any areas of concerns at Wapo High School and Byrd. The Drug and Alcohol Coalition meetings were held this past Monday. We tried to hold one during the day and one in the evening. And we received an update from Chief Carmichael, some information about the grand opening of the Wapo Recovery Center. And upcoming events such as Screenagers, Growing Up in the Digital Age, we're providing to community members. That's October third at 7:00 PM, and that's sponsored by the Drug and Alcohol Coalition. And October eighth, another important meeting at seven o'clock at the Wapo Police Department. That'll be Chief Carmichael, along with Dr. Harmon and Dr. Henry Schuster. They'll present on youth and vaping, it's a very prevalent topic right now. I also just wanted to note, you know, with the vaping epidemic, that, you know, we're offering our Wapo High School students, you know, an education and association program. And that was discussed at the Drug and Alcohol Coalition. And this program will be run after school using Project Connect curriculum by the Karen program. And any student who's interested in more information should see the school nurse. All inquiries are confidential. And we really want to, you know, help our students who may be addicted or to, you know, quote-unquote, kick the habit. And the high school's also partnering with Mass General Hospital this fall and conducting a research project designed to help our students and develop more effective health education programs for our students and our families. Mr. Imbush did a nice job at the opening of the meeting and spoke about vaping and that if any student needed help, they could come and get help and, you know, not be punished for coming and seeking that out. And we would help get them into a program. And he's already had a dozen students come and ask for help, which is a positive step in that direction. Just in continuing my entry plan, I sent out a short staff survey about teaching and learning, asking staff, "What are we doing well in terms of teaching and learning? What are the challenges, where we could improve teaching and learning? And are there any issues that we're not talking about that we should be doing to improve teaching and learning?" So I'll be looking at those in the coming weeks and taking a good analysis. Just finally, you might see some of the e-notes might be changing. I think the high school went to a new, it's called Samore. So you can access it on your phone and anywhere you go, and there are no PDFs. And it makes things easier and you can track your hits. And Mr. Imbush said that the first time he sent it out, he could see that he had reported over a thousand views. So it really tracks our communication to see how we're doing. I know that other schools are doing it as well, which is really nice. In terms of MSBA, all of the necessary documents have been submitted. So we are ahead of schedule. Okay, so we are in, it's done. So we will look and listen for any important updates. So the board meeting was originally scheduled for December, but, you know, I communicated with the group and with Mark that they're looking to possibly move it up to October thirtieth. So stay tuned, so that's a good sign in our favor. Just a couple additional upcoming dates. Official MCAS results were released and parents, you will be receiving them shortly. We do have one person, she is a miracle worker, is Mrs. Lucina Nagel in the office. And she's in charge of putting them in envelopes and mailing them out by herself. So she's getting them ready and they'll be getting in the mail soon. And Mr. Hahn will also, in the upcoming months, provide an overall MCAS presentation like we've always done in the past. And finally, all right, Bill, I'm going to let them know, mark your calendars. October eleventh, 8:30 AM to about, we'll extend it to maybe 9:45, if people are there. At the Wapo High School track, we are going to have Walk with the Supers. So it is designed to promote community engagement and wellness. And you can come for a portion, you can stay for the whole thing. We're looking at hopefully having some, maybe some coffee. Mary, Mary, hopefully, we'll work together on that. And this is open to all community members, all community members. So we'll get something out to, you know, council on aging. We'll post it, I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
Yeah, just kind of a fun and innovative way to connect with the whole community. So Walk with the Supers, we hope people will be willing to go for a walk with us. Or run, we're not, well, I won't be running. We'll be at the high school track.
So we're hoping it'll catch on and we can continue to do it. So thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Goff?
I assume the kids are okay?
Absolutely. We tried to hold it at time, not too early, because we're looking at drop-off times to get them to school. They wanted to come over. Check with Mr. Imbush and the track is available, so we're going to do it.
Excellent. Moving on to subcommittee activity, Special Education Subcommittee Meeting.
Yes, we actually just held the Special Education Subcommittee this afternoon, right? And actually, Dr. Quealy provided most of the, a lot of the information. That was at the Curriculum Subcommittee Meeting. He did mention the Wapo High School report and some of the improvements we made. So he talked about putting that into a document.
Next, Subcommittee Activity Legislative Subcommittee Activity. Do you want to say something first, or do you want me to start?
You can go first.
Oh, sure. So the long-awaited Comprehensive Foundation Budget Review Commission Implementation Bill now exists. The Senate, I believe, is slated to take it up on Thursday. I sent the summary out to the committee. There's some things that are quite encouraging, notably the inclusion of transportation costs within circuit breaker calculation. I think it was either an Alaskia Committee meeting or perhaps a Subcommittee meeting. Mr. Frisch sent us around an article that kind of articulated the concern that perhaps as districts' per pupil expenditure rises, which is a goal that special members of this committee have sought after for so long, as all boats rise like that, for the circuit breaker figure especially, getting to four times circuit breaker now becomes harder. And there's the concern that as one pile of state funds grows, another could shrink. So from what I've heard at the State House and my day job, there's a lot of excitement around that piece in particular and buy-in. I was kind of searching around to see, maybe Nancy, you have what MAS C has said on the subject. I have yet to really see a, read a comprehensive statement, but I think there's some interest, there's a lot of opportunity in the bill and also what seems to be a very robust debate around funding. A concerning piece would be the fact that the funding trajectory is for fi, a seven-year trajectory to phase in the funding, as well as it currently doesn't have a revenue source attached to it. They're going on continued economic growth to facilitate the implementation of this proposal. And I think that's a piece around revenue that is going to be part of a wider dialogue at the State House this fall. But also, I think, as it pertains to the bill itself, there's going to be some measures to say, try to continue to look towards a possible future millionaires tax, as well as possible sources of state funding to kind of track it, to attach to the bill lest, you know, we find ourselves four years out and in a recession and unable to kind of keep the promise. So interesting that it continues to unfold and I'll continue to keep the committee, the community updated with pieces of information I have. You know, Ms. Galvin, you've done some research, I'm sure.
Yeah, I have some too, but let me just ask you. If the Senate is taking this up Thursday of next week, do you see this as something that is going to get resolved this fall? Or do you see it as something that will likely spill into the spring?
I don't see it as something that will likely spill into the spring. And I think that...
You do not?
I do not. And as someone who, I know you focused, you followed closely how we couldn't, the two branches couldn't come to an agreement on the bill. I think that's why they've waited now eight, or now nine months into the session, to come up with their bill. And it's also why the Senate is doing it first, because, I mean, I work for the House, but the Senate was the one that was dragging its feet on some of the particulars. And so I think that the feeling internally that I hear is, number one, that there's broad agreement. I think just, I know it's, you know, 2019, but if you looked at the stakeholders who were excited about it on Twitter, the people, you know, if, when Chairwoman Peish and the current Senate Chair of Education and Senator Sangin Cheng Diaz are all excited and supportive of that, I think that speaks to a broad emerging consensus around this as a solution. I don't believe this, some bills come out in what's called pre-conference in that the kind of, the both branches agree that while members can file amendments, that they like the product and they think the product is passable in both houses, so amendments are discouraged. I don't, I won't go as far as to say that this bill is pre-conference, but I think there's a hope that they, there will be few differences in the final analysis between what the Senate and the House passes and that they've worked very hard over this entire, frankly, since they were unable a year and three months ago to come to an agreement on this last time. They've worked very hard to have a proposal that is very close. So the sense in the building is that we're, this may be done before Christmas. I think before Thanksgiving might be too optimistic, but to your question, a lot of time was put into having something that would not be radically different between the two branches. And then drag through the conference committee process.
Okay, the reason I was asking is because when I brought it up at the last meeting, I was thinking about how we need to approach our legislators and make sure, because as of yet, I haven't seen a town-by-town breakdown in terms of how, who benefits. And we know that the gateway cities are going to be the places that benefit the most. But I have not seen anything comprehensive yet from MAS C. I'm friendly with the superintendent in Holliston, who is the president of MAS S. And his take on it is that it's one of the best pieces of legislation that he's seen in a good while. And that the MAS S participated regularly in the development of this bill. So I can only assume that it was MAS S and MAS C as well. So MAS S is superintendents and C is school committees. So I do agree with you, I'm hearing that there's a lot of broad consensus. I spoke with Jim O'Neill, the Chair of our Board of Selectmen, and they're working on getting our legislators to come in to one of their meetings soon. So what I'm proposing that we do is to reach out to the Social Studies Department at the high school. And Bridgette and Bill, I sent you a draft of something very late this afternoon. But if this is going to move quickly, advocacy sooner rather than later is going to be the important part. And we've had really good results when we've tapped into some of our high school students who are just interested in learning this. This has been one of those things, and I had a brief conversation with Brendan when we first came in today. But this is one of those things that has taken at least eight years, I want to say, to happen. So to be involved in really getting some significant legislation passed would be a cool experience for our students also. So, you know, just proposing that we do something, but it does sound like, if Bill's right, that we're going to kind of need to scramble and aim for...
Yeah, we're hoping to get it on the governor's desk, like, very soon.
Well, they need a funding source. So that might get in the way.
Well, that's the, that's the, I, you know, not to be a cynic, because I am a cynic when it comes to legislative process, but I think that's the elephant in the room.
Of course.
And you know, because you were doing this the last couple of times, if you cannot just hitch this to new growth.
Correct.
You just can't. Because our economic system does not go in a straight line, it goes in a squiggly line. But as far as the numbers, I will tell the committee, I have personally attempted to bribe the Chief of Staff of the Joint Committee on Education every day this week to see the numbers.
I mean, the town-by-town breakdown.
The town-by-town breakdown.
I think we need to push on that.
Exactly.
And I will be pushing in the morning if the committee's okay with that.
Absolutely. It's my understanding that mass budget is running them and should be out with something shortly. And it's unclear what form it will take from the committee, but I was having a discussion with staff today and there's kind of a broad consensus around, especially suburban legislators in the old suburban Coalition District, to be like, "We need the spreadsheet. We need something similar to the spreadsheet that I think was produced a couple of years ago by, was it MAS C?", maybe came out of conference.
There always is a spreadsheet, yes, yes.
I'm thinking about that one in particular, but I think that's where the ask is coming, is we need to see actuals, we need to see kind of historicals, and we need the whole picture so that it's, there's no sticker shock that perhaps, there's a feeling that maybe some communities, we may have a small amount of Chap. 70 increase, but the circuit breaker increase could...
That's the thing that needs to get put together.
Exactly.
And I'm sure, I'm sure they are working on it. But the way, the way Dr. Jackson from Holliston explained it is, he said, "Expect to see big winners and little winners." And he said, "If I had to predict, we're going to be little winners." But we need to know that we're winners.
Right.
So, you know, that's, that's kind of the work in a nutshell. And truly, I think it means a lot for us as a Commonwealth to maintain the strength of our public school systems. So, you know, I'd be fine with it if that's the result. But if you can push from your end, I will do the same.
Yeah, obviously, I can't lobby the body I work for, so if you could be the one to send the email in the morning, that would be great. And I'll read it.
You can offer bribes though.
Absolutely. Always in the hallway, Mark. Anything else on legislative? Seeing none, warrants, donations, and minutes.
Ms. Zanitio, take it away.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the following payroll warrant, two zero, from September fifth, two zero one zero PA, for the amount listed in your packet.
Second. Motion by Ms. Zanitio, second amendment by Ms. Tepreen, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, six zero zero.
I'll make a motion to approve the following accounts payable warrants from September twelfth, two two zero zero one one, from September nineteenth, two two zero zero one two, for the amounts listed in your packets.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Zanitio, second amendment by Ms. Deota, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, six zero zero. Someone like to take a gift and donation of the award?
Make a motion to approve the following gifts and donations to Old Post Road School, Boyd and School, and Johnson Middle School from Bay State Textiles Recycling, in the amount of $353. To Old Post Road School from the Oples Road School PAC for recess equipment, the amount of $1,290. To Elm Street School from the Elm Street School PAC, items for the new sensory room, in the amount of $8,500. Systemwide from Middlesex Savings Bank, general donation in the amount of $1,250. To Byrd Middle School from Artsonia Commission, $273. To Byrd Middle School from the Coca-Cola Commission, $34. And to Boyd and School from Life Touch National School Studios Commission, in the amount of $498.
Second. Motion by Ms. Zanitio, second amendment by Ms. Tepreen, all those in favor? Opposed, abstained, six zero zero.
Can I just comment that we have to be really appreciative of the work that the PACs do? You know, it's kind of easy to go... You know, it's kind of easy to go through these donations, but it's really impressive, the amount of work that they do. Thank you.
Problematism minutes. Let's take the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the following minutes. Is it just this one?
Yeah.
From September twelfth, the Wapo School Committee meeting minutes.
Second. By Ms. Machini, second by Mr. Breen. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, six zero zero. Thank you.
I just want to publically thank Mary Mattel. She was in here at the crack of dawn, setting this room up for the Assistant Superintendent's Leadership Seminar across the district and transforming the place. And did everything in terms of materials that they needed, had everybody set up. It ran so smoothly, and they were just so appreciative. And then transforming the place back as it is, maybe, you know, an hour before the school committee meeting started. So thank you, because it really reflects upon our district to be able to host something like that with other assistant superintendents. So thank you.
Yay, Mary.
Mr. Breen?
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion by Ms. Breen, second by Ms. Gaetat. All those in favor? Opposed, abstained, six zero zero. Thank you very much.